I call this our first meeting of the year 2023 to order. At this time, we will stand for our invocation and for our pledge of allegiance. To our wonderful Creator, we thank you for another opportunity. We thank you for this new year of 2023. We thank you for the opportunity to serve your people. We ask that you would come into our meeting, guide our hearts and our minds, that whatever we do will be done solely for the purpose of serving the citizens of Florence, that the city of Florence will be a greater place to live and a better neighbor to all those around us. So we welcome you into this meeting to have your way. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council, when we look at our agenda here, I will ask for a motion to approve our December 12, 2022, reglet meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign. At this time, council, if there's no objections, I would like to move our agenda item of introduction of resolutions to position right now so that we can do the notification to the public and also greet our guests and give the young people opportunity to receive this, their resolution and be able to go back to school. If there are no objections, we will move our resolutions forward to this time. Hearing none, at this time, no objections. Our first resolution that we have is Resolution Number 2023 dash year one. It's a resolution to congratulate the South Florence Bruins for winning the 2022 South Carolina Football State Championship. And I'm going to ask that our deputy city manager, Sadi Davis, please read that resolution for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number 2023 dash oh one, a resolution to congratulate the South Florence Bruins for winning the 2022 South Carolina Football State Championship. Whereas, the South Florence varsity football team defeated Northwestern 57 to 30 on December 3, 2022, in Columbia, South Carolina, at the Charlie W. Johnson Stadium, earning them the title of Class 4A South Carolina Football State Champions. And whereas, this is the Bruins' first football state championship in program history and the first football championship won by a Florence school one since Wilson won in Class 3A in 2007. And whereas, the Bruins tackled their competition throughout the season, becoming Region 6-4A Champions, City Champions, and lower state champions before ultimately claiming the state championship title. And whereas, led by head coach Drew Marlowe, the South Florence Bruins finished the season undefeated with 15 wins. And whereas, through hard work and determination, these student athletes have proven themselves state champions and are role models for area youth. And whereas, this winning season is a great source of pride for the players, coaches, students, alumni, supporters of Bruin Athletics, Florence School District One staff and administration, and the Florence community. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Florence, South Carolina, commends this tremendous athletic accomplishment and congratulates the South Florence Bruins for winning the 2022 South Carolina Football State Championship. Resolve this ninth day of January 2023. Approve James W. Peterson, City Attorney, Teresa Myers-Ervin, Mayor, and Casey Seymour, Municipal Clerk.
And at this time, I'm going to receive that resolution. And I was going to ask that all the representatives of the South Florence Bruins, please come forward. I'm going to ask that superintendent, will you please join as well? And I believe I'm going to ask everyone, please introduce yourself and then we will proceed to the table.
Could you go first?
Yes, sir.
Rachel Alley, Superintendent, our home school.
Curtis Walker, Athletic Director, South Florence High School.
Uh, yeah, and then, uh, and the superintendent.
Tom Clary.
So, approved.
Name of year.
At this time, as we prepare to present the resolution, I'm going to ask who will be receiving the resolution of the afternoon.
Be careful.
Congratulations on the hard work of your next team, dear. This is the cause of your great teamwork, I'm sure it's great to you, yes, but also I know it's the cause you listen to your colleagues. So to West Florence, on behalf of the best part tonight, congratulations. And I just want to ask that, um, council member, ready? Is ready, South Florence, uh, you see, it's up to after the council.
Yeah, class of 1990, so this is a long time coming. Congratulations, guys. One of the things that most impressed me outside of the 15 wins was the fact of how the whole community came out and stood behind you. As I went to the games, I saw the crowds increase and also the diversity of the crowd increase in terms of the people represented from different schools. And so y'all's wins on the field have been a win for our community, and I think it's fitting that our first resolution of 2023 be to recognize the number one team in the state. So congratulations for what y'all've done on and off the field. Very proud of you.
Do any other members of the council want to make a statement? If not, once again, congratulations. I want to say, I was there when y'all beat West Florence.
I was there when they beat Wilson.
But I can also say that your player Joe, who's on the team, that is my husband's cousin. So that's why I say when we were one Florence, we were one Florence, because pretty well everyone has someone at one of the high school that's either a relative or friend. So I have a family member who serves on y'all's football team. And I'm so proud of you because I believe that as an athlete, athletics teaches you discipline. You become disciplined. And I'm pretty sure with the history that you have, there's no way you could have won 15 games without discipline on and off that field. So once again, congratulations. We're so proud of you and we continue to expect great things for you and even your future academic and sports career. Thank you and to our superintendent. Thank you for what you're doing to support athletic program and athletic director. Congratulations and thank you as well. They just had the Hall of Fame induction banquet this Saturday, and it had representation from South Florence in great numbers. So once again, congratulations. And any other? If not, thank you once again and...
I think, Madam Mayor, it's the coaching me I have to say, so.
Sure.
Congratulations, guys, with a season 15-0. Takes a lot of hard work and a lot of dedication to see the city surround you guys into a state championship. I was actually on that Wilson State Championship team in 2007. But to see your season, to break school records, to be 15-0, speaks a true testament of what you guys have done. So congratulations to you guys, to the alumni, and also to your parents, man, who got you there for as far and who have really shown your true support. To Dr. Mallory and the school board for the enhancements that they have done to grow you guys and to the young men and these student athletes that you are. We wish you well in your future endeavors and again, congratulations on being the 4A State Champions of South Carolina.
Thank you. And at this time, when we went right into the resolution, I'm going to call for a vote for both resolutions, number 2023 and 0-1, and Resolution Number 2023-02. We have a motion and a second.
Second.
And discussion, hearing none, all those in favor of those resolutions, please say aye.
Aye.
So at this time, we will proceed, we have the Resolution Number 2023. We're going to ask that Councilman Jabe, please read that part of a resolution and present.
It'd be my pleasure. Thank you. This is Resolution 2023 dash 02, a resolution to proclaim the week of January 29 through February 4, 2023, as Catholic Schools Week in the City of Florence. Whereas, St. Anthony Catholic School has educated many young people in the Florence community that have become successful citizens, parents, employers, and employees. And whereas, Catholic Schools Week is an annual celebration of Catholic education in the United States and an opportunity to recognize the importance, the value, and the contributions of Catholic education to the community and to our nation. The theme for 2023 is faith, excellence, service. And whereas, the mission of St. Anthony Catholic School is to provide a high-quality education that emphasizes the formation of moral values and commitment to community service. And whereas, St. Anthony Catholic School strives to provide a comprehensive and challenging academic program and to foster the spiritual, intellectual, emotional, social, and physical growth of its students while respecting and supporting individual abilities. And whereas, St. Anthony Catholic School is committed to reaching out to all children regardless of heritage, religion, race, or economic status, and has made this commitment part of their mission. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Florence. The City of Florence proclaims January 29 through February 4, 2023, as Catholic Schools Week and commends St. Anthony Catholic School for their contribution to the education and formation of the youth in our community. Resolve this ninth day of January 2023. Approved as deformed by Jane Peterson, James Peterson, City Attorney, attested by Casey Moore, Municipal Clerk, and signed by our mayor, Teresa Myers-Ervin. And at this time, I'd ask...
Please come forward.
Yes, thank you.
I'll ask that the representative and the class, please come forward. You can bring them all, because there would be a photo of them. Bring them all, they can find.
So on behalf of the City Council and City of Florence, we want to commend St. Anthony and our principal of St. Anthony Catholic School, Kristin Golemo. Thank you for being there with us. And this is the resolution in recognition of Catholic Schools Week. To all of you young people, thank you for what you do. Keep it up. Become, we all have eyes on. And Ms. Golemo, if you have, want to say anything or you have any students who want to say something?
Can I, Chris, Tristan and Christopher follow me?
Thank you.
All right. Madam Mayor and the City Council members, I want to thank you for recognizing St. Anthony Catholic School during and in conjunction with our Catholic Schools Week. I have a few teachers that were able to join us today. If I could please have our teachers stand, they are the reason that we can talk about what we talked about in the resolution today. They make it come to fruition. L. Thomas, Denise Spivey, Dan Spivey, and Mrs. Maisak, Kathleen Maisak. We also have some parents that without their constant support and generosity and time, we would not be doing what we do so well. I have two students that would like to speak on behalf of our school, Tristan Woodall and Christopher Davis.
Good afternoon. My name is Tristan Woodall, and I am a seventh grade student at St. Anthony Catholic School here in Florence. On behalf of our entire school, I would like to say thank you to the mayor and city council for this resolution honoring our great school here today. Please let me take a minute to share with you what makes St. Anthony Catholic School such a special place for all of us. I believe the best thing about our school is our principal and teachers. They always look after us and want to make our lives better. They're always guiding us to be better people. Our principals and teachers listen to our opinions and assist us in any way they can. They're always willing to help out after school or anytime we need help. Our school changes people for the better. They treat each of us as a special gift from God, starting when we step out of our cars in the morning until the end of the day. I know our school has really changed the way I look at things. St. Anthony makes me feel that I will be something more than I am or greater than I am right now. I can say from a personal note that they have cared about my family and I over the past few years, and they have done just about everything possible to help us. I want to say thank you here today. Thank you for allowing me to speak today, and this is what makes my school special.
Thank you, and you're welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
My name is Christopher Davis, and I am also a seventh grade student at St. Anthony Catholic School. On behalf of our principal, Mrs. Golemo, and everyone at our school, I would like to thank Mayor Teresa Myers-Ervin and everyone on the Florence City Council for honoring our school today. Catholic Schools Week is important to many schools across the entire nation, and ours is no different. It is a week we use each school year to recognize what makes our school special, and it means a great deal to us all. I would like to speak about some of the things that make St. Anthony so special. We have a great team of teachers and staff that give us many opportunities to excel in all of our grade levels. Our principal, Mrs. Golemo, is very involved and puts great effort into further developing our school. Our school focuses on ensuring we understand what it means to be part of the Florence community. We do food drives and many other charity events throughout the school year to help people in the Florence area. The mission of our school is strongly based upon these four pillars: faith, family, knowledge, and service. Faith and knowledge go hand in hand because each day we learn to excel in subjects such as math, history, English, and many more. But we also learn about our faith and how we can further strengthen it. We also see our Florence community as a family, so we do different surface acts just to try and give back a little what the community has given us. Thank you again for recognizing our school today and allowing me to share with you some of the great things about St. Anthony Catholic School.
I would like to say thank you, especially to the young people who spoke so well. And so I think your school should be very proud of how you represented them here today. Thank you. We appreciate it. And at this time, we will move forward on our agenda, and we have NAC's appearance before council, and we'll give the children a time to be, to exit there. Each person who gives notice to speak is limited to five minutes. And presentation at this discretion of the Presiding Officer of the City of Florence, Code Orange Number 2 dash 4H. So at this time, we have Mr. Damian Akane Akun. Is he here? Mr. Damian? Mr. Damian? Mr. Damian is not here at this time, so at this time, we will move forward with our agenda. Next, we have ordinance in position, Bill Number 2022 dash 37, and this for a second reading. It's an ordinance to amend the design guidelines for the downtown Florence, South Carolina, and the unified development. Ordinance, do you have a motion? Do we have a second? There's a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign. Next, we have Bill Number 2022 dash 38 for a second reading. It's an ordinance to annex and zone commercial general three parcels located at 401 and 409 and 411 Pampdico Highway. And this particular ordinance is identified as Florence County Tax Map Parcel Number 901-09-02-002, 901-09-01-003, and Parcels Number 9108-05-001. And as you may see, the applicant has requested that we defer this, so that item will be deferred. Next, we have Bill Number 2022 dash 39 for a second reading. It's an ordinance to annex and zone general residential RG2, the former Palms Golf Course identified as the portion of Florence County Tax Map Parcel Number 00751-01-049. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? He said, second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we have Bill Number 2022 dash 40 for a second reading. It's an ordinance to declare portions of the Florence County Tax Map Parcel Number 90078-01-006, specifically a 30-foot by 339-foot portion along the southern property line as surplus and authorize the transfers of land to Joseph and Molly Roberts for the purpose of combining with the Florence County Tax Parcel Number 90078-01-005. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those sitting who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we have introduction of ordinance. And the first bill is Bill Number 2023 dash 01 for a first reading. It's an ordinance to annex and zone NC 6, that since point one parcel at 925 West Somethin' Street, Florence County Tax Map Parcel Number 90060-07-002. Do we have a motion?
More.
Have a motion, second. We'll hear from Mr. Moore at this time.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is an annexation of Tax Map Number 90060-07-002, and this is what we often call a donut hole. The property owner has requested annexation and to zone it NC 6.1, which is in compliance with all the adjacent properties. City water and sewer services are currently available, and planning commission did recommend this unanimously, and that concludes staff report.
All right. Do we have any questions of Mr. Moore? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying all aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let me reflect, the bill has passed. Next, we have introduction, ordinance, Bill Number 2023 dash year two for first reading. It is an ordinance to annex and zone DS, the lots at 825 South Church Street, Florence County Tax Map Parcel Number 901-05-01-007. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll hear from Mr. Moore at this time.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This property and the next matter is our two properties that the City of Florence currently are recently purchased. With this parcel, it is located on South Church Street, and we are requesting zoning designation of destination select use. And city services are available to this property, and that concludes staff report.
Do we have any discussion? Any question? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign. The bill has passed first reading. Next, we have Bill Number 2023 dash 03 for first reading. It is an ordinance to annex and zone OSR, the lots at 833 South Church Street, Florence County Tax Map Parcel Number 901-05-01-18. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. At this time, we hear from Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is the second property, 833 South Church Street. The city is requesting open space zoning designation for this property. We will use this to extend our landscape gateway into Florence. We currently own, you can kind of see it there, just south, a little triangular piece of property that is landscaped. We will continue that into this property after annexation. And that concludes staff report.
All right. Is there any discussion? Chair recognizes councilman.
On behalf of council and the community, thank you for recognizing the need and taking action to enhance and beautify that corridor. This, it is a, the work on the corridors, as you know, is such a critical piece, and that is a very prominent entryway into the Church Street, Berenger Street corridor. So I'm excited to see that. You were going to say something?
This is in partnership with Bruce Lee Foundation as well, so this is...
Fantastic.
Yeah, I want to say that Bruce Lee Foundation, one of the members actually reached out to him and asked me that, that property came available, would we as a city be interested in having that property? And of course, you know, I told him that we would. I spoke with our city manager. So once again, thank you to the foundation, because that represents, again, partnership. And also having that area there cleaned up and also having that to be a beautiful green space to introduce you as you're coming closer to the city of Florence. And I hope with that, that that will also start the continuous beautification of the corridor. And as well, while we own there, we do have some other city property along the area that we as a city that we're working on cleaning up and beautifying as well. So once again, the partners, thank you for all that you do to help this city continue to grow and be a better place to live. So at that time, with that statement, that we had that, did we carry our motion yet?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then. If all that's complete, we'll move on to our next bill, and our bill...
Nothing we both didn't get.
So we didn't carry it. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign. Next, we have Bill Number 2023 dash year four for first reading. In this ordinance to abandon a sewer line and easement located on South Casua Drive, Florence County Tax Map Parcel Number 001-00-01-159. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? We'll hear from Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This request has been made by the property owner. This property here is located in front of Del May, that fronts Casua Drive. If you drive by it, they have recently done some pretty significant grading work and with that have exposed some of the infrastructure there. The property owner does own the property just to the left of this as well, and I believe in an effort to make the properties a little bit more marketable, they are requesting us to abandon our easement and line. The developer of that property will remove the sewer line and take it back to the property line. So they will continue to have access to sewer... So they will continue to have access to sewer water, but the easement will no longer run through the middle of that property. I'll take you to a flat showing generally where that easement is located, which is kind of hashed out here in a red, and they will take it back to the property line and stop it there for future access and allow for a little bit more flexibility as to how they develop the property.
And Mr. Moore, I do want to be clear that these particular, this sewer line and everything that was placed there was placed there by the property owner, so it's not in occurrence of cost to the city because it was done. So if we're abandoning right-of-way sewer line, it won't affect the city. This is property that belongs to this particular owner, and he simply has the right now to remove that and receive his development.
That's correct. Currently serves no.
No purpose.
No one is connected to that.
All right. Thank you.
Quick question. Is that property in the city or is it outside the city?
It's in the city.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion?
Does staff, I'm sorry.
Chair recognizes councilman.
Is this a staff recommendation to approve this one?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign. Let it reflect that bill has carried. Next, we have bill number twenty twenty-three dash zero five for a first read. It's an ordinance to abandon this Cedar Florence interest in right-of-way located on Power Road Street on north side of Florence County tax parcel, map parcel number zero zero one four seven dash zero one dash zero seven two. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. At this time, we'll hear from Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. This is in partnership with the school district. Many of you have seen the demolition and the work currently going on at this property where they will be building the new North Vista Elementary School. They are, they have requested this to better accommodate the driveway and student drop-off that they are proposing. And so I will go to that portion. And we have notified all the adjacent property owners. This is a very small, minor street that does not have any access to it. It simply kind of loops around. You can see existing power street here, and then it loops around to Fraser and Light Street. Access will still be granted through Fraser, but the ownership of that right-of-way will be transferred over to the school district, and it will become a part of their larger parcel.
Any questions or discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign. Let it reflect that the bill has passed. And as we enter to our introduction of ordinance, we've already addressed items A and B, and then resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero three is a resolution and conditional grant and development agreement to provide an incentive for the development of a new housing within the north Florence as a part of the ongoing neighborhood revitalization or redevelopment project. But this item will be discussed in the second session. Next, we have reports to council. We will call for Mr. Davis to go through the appointments to boards and commission.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. We have four boards or commissions that have vacancies. Our first board is our Memorial Stadium Commission. There is one vacancy there. We have an applicant, Mr. Robert Prezen, and that falls to Councilman McCall.
I'll defer this time. Defer my motion this time.
Next is our Public Safety Citizens Review Board. There's one vacancy. We have two applicants, David Jones, William Matthews, Jr. That falls to Madam Mayor.
I would defer.
We have, our next board is the Board of Zoning and Appeals. There's one vacancy on that board. There are no applicants. That falls to Councilman Smith.
I defer at this time.
Finally, we have our Design Review Board. There are two vacancies on this board. Applicants must be a commercial general contractor or a person with landscape design experience. We have no applicants and council members. That falls to Councilmember Braddock and Jubay. Starting with Braddock first.
Defer.
Councilman Jubay.
It's hard to vote on nobody.
I defer.
That concludes staff's report.
Thank you. And next, we have report from me as the mayor. I just want to report and thank, first of all, our city staff for how they responded at the Christmas Day with what occurred with our change in our water department area. But thank you to everyone from our city manager throughout to our staff who was out there surveilling and finding out what issues were, and actually being able to get everything back in order. But also, I would like to report that what will occur, we will do a debriefing just to see what was done, and is there anything that we as a city can do better in the future? So we will be doing a debriefing for that as well. And also, while we were, I'll, once again, acknowledging the fact that the Florence County progress, we are still moving forward with the progress of making sure that Envision has everything they need when they prepare to break ground here in May upcoming this year. And with the Florence Downtown Event Corporation sitting upon that board, just acknowledging that if you did not get to see that, the fact that they did receive the small town or community grant from T-Mobile. And there's just so many great things going on with the boards that we have here as well. But I just want to say to you all that things are going well with the city. Progress is still being made across the street at Urban Square, because a lot of people are still asking about that. One of the first things you'll probably see occurring there will be the actually parking garage coming out the center of downtown. And you will be seeing some progress made on Pine Street with the Mr. Jesse Wells, who's looking at doing some townhomes there. Received some information this past week from him. So that project will be moving forward as well. We will have a flats committee actually coming up this month. And one of the things with the flats committee is also the, you know, major seventy-six corridor, which leaves all the way out to Francis Mary. But once we have that flats meeting, I will bring you back an update from that particular committee. But for right now, those are the major things that are occurring that we are being a part of. Once again, and thank you to the city council for all the support they gave to the city staff when we were going through that process with the change in the water pressure. So that is my update to the council. And if the council has any questions about any of the committees that we serve upon, please let me know. If not, thank you. And I see Councilwoman Moore right there, and I'm Mr. Kermit Moore, because they were at the Athletic Hall of Fame banquet I attended this week. So if you hadn't had a chance, I'll encourage you all to go look and see some of the athletes that was inducted here for Florence. I was very surprised at the history that we have here in Florence. So that completes my report at this time. So next, we'll move forward to our committee reports. And our first one, we have a report from our chair from the Business Development Committee. Chair?
Thank you. The Business Development Committee met on December the fifteenth of 2022. Attending were Councilman Braddock, as well as Councilwoman Barnes, along with our city manager, Randy Osterman, Clint Moore, and Michael Hemingway. Thank you for staff, as always, for the participation with the committee meetings that we hold. We went into a number of different items that are currently underway that the city is involved in. Of course, the big thing at that time was the announcement of the Envision, announcement of the construction, the awarding of a new project that's coming. That is a significant future impact on the city and our PD region. We did go from that into a discussion about the surface water issues, how are we going to be able to accommodate the needs of that facility? And Mr. Hemingway gave us a very detailed update about the need for us to take our surface water treatment plant, which we were considering, and if I say this incorrectly, Michael, please let me know, we were considering a change to add five million gallons per day capacity. But now that we have this new business coming and their significant demands, we're going to need to do a ten million gallons per day infrastructure, excuse me, infrastructure and rehabilitation of the existing facility, which is going to be much more extensive, and it'll be over a period of time. As I understand that, Mr. Hemingway, you're going to be spearheading that whole operation. God bless you with what you're going to be doing there. We also then had a conversation about the wastewater management facility, and again, the need for improvements and increase in capacity there. We're looking to go from twenty-two million gallons per day to a thirty million gallons per day capacity. So both of those are representative of the growth that's coming to our community and the development that's of people interested in Florence, and we need to be able to provide the water and sewer that these individuals as well as businesses need. We went into further conversation about the Jeffries Creek Sanitary Sewer Interceptor that is running through Jeffries Creek right now, and that as a part of the overall sewer plan, it's going to be moving, well, not moving, it's going to be adding another line that will essentially run down the middle Second Loop Road to help carry wastewater from the west side of town over to the east side of town. So basically, from Casua to Erby, all along Second Loop, the median there is where it would be. Is that a five-year look that we're looking at for that? Mr. Hemingway?
The actual design is currently underway, and that is being done. We should be finished at completion later this year or next year, and then we'll come up with a discussion schedule after.
Well, we look forward to the design being completed and starting in on that. Very important. And I know DHEC is going to be very excited once we get that going as well. Thank you for your assistance on that. And then in conjunction with that, also the stormwater, the stormwater work is currently underway, and a number of streets and neighborhoods throughout our city, and a lot of that is being done along with the same time looking at some of the roads that we're doing through the penny sales tax. So we're trying to address as many of these at the same time as we can. So a lot of improvements are taking place all throughout the city, as well as some that were in the investigation phase. The Pennsylvania Area Project is one of them. But then there's the Timrod Park Cedar and McQueen Street, North Church Street, and Oakland Avenue are all still within the engineering phase of the work to be done. So a lot will be taking place in 2023 along those very important infrastructure projects. We were also updated on several of the development projects going on. Urban Square being one. The demo of the two existing structures is complete, working on the final phase of the voluntary cleanup with SC DHEC. And we have a signed contract for the parking deck, and we're looking forward to seeing that coming out of the ground. Another project, the Old Motel, has been completed, being torn down. The site work is complete. We also looked at the MB Baridi Street development. There's approximately eighteen townhomes coming. We're excited about that. There's also one seventy-five North Dargon Street, a project that was delayed initially because of a shared wall collapse, but that's now coming to fruition. And it's going to be composed of a first-floor jewelry store and then two additional floors of apartments, with each floor being about fifteen hundred square feet. The Lost Cajun is working on the final inspections. That's over on North Dargon. The Norfolk Building is underway on West Evans Street, and the Old Theater on South Dargon Street, as a request for qualifications, will be introduced in 2023 for new development to see what kind of developer is interested in that old theater. So that's going to be a very exciting new project the city will be involved in. The Pharmacy Building, that is right next to it, is not included in the RFQ. One of the things we did talk about is a healthy workforce and the ability to get out and get involved, and is there some formal opportunities for our downtown workforce in particular? And so we asked about a, is there some kind of downtown loop available? And sure enough, Clint, to the rescue, said, why, of course we have one. And so Clint, if you don't mind, please share with council what the city has come up with as a walking path that people can do on their lunch breaks.
Yes, so we have developed a downtown loop, so to speak. Many, many towns throughout the southeast and other areas have done this as well. We have been able to purchase through a grant sidewalk medallions that mark the distances along with signs to show turns and give direction. Between all the streetscape work and working through DOT, we have not been able to install these yet, but this is approximately the plan. The initially starts out on the corner of Dargon and Evans, works around Baridi, and goes down, the longest loop being three and a quarter miles, goes down Dargon Street, hang a ride onto National Cemetery, Cherokee Road, and then up around Timrod Park, up McQueen Street, and then wrap back around. So we'll have multiple loops for our visitors and folks that work downtown to do during their lunch break or while they're here on weekend visiting. So it's a nice little project that we'll be able to start moving forward this year.
It's exciting to see the enhancement of all these different pieces coming together to make our downtown more interactive. And, you know, you have the different artwork that's along the pathway as well, so it's going to be a lot of exciting pieces for different visitors as well as locals to get involved in. We then went to new business discussion. We talked about some other projects that we're looking at, review of the road projects and all. And then we then talked about the East Tamaida Corridor ad hoc committee members and what we decided on, that there would be a maximum of nine members for that committee, and there was going to be consultation, and that item is, for the proposal of those names, that's going to be with regard to item number ten, the appointments. That will be coming up further on in our agenda. The last thing we talked about was the interactive website, and Mr. Moore, if you don't mind sharing that with us so that our community can know about the improvements to our website and the interactive features. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, this is far beyond my capabilities, so really need to thank Amanda and her team and our consultants on putting this together. We're currently working with our IT consultant to place a quick link here as soon as you pull it up. But for right now, the ability to access that is through our Planning, Research, and Development Department, and you can go to capital improvements page. There you will be able to navigate through our stormwater master plan, the stormwater infrastructure improvements, our third penny sales tax projects, and then we'll, of course, add and update as we move along with various other projects. The biggest thing, and certainly something we want to put out to our residents to get feedback from them, is the interactive portion of this. And so there is, on the website, you can go, look on that link, and here is what is called a story map. It is developed through our GIS system, and this will kind of take you through the various stages of what infrastructure improvement is, what a master plan is, and just help educate and give updates on the projects that we are doing. One of the largest things, and we hope that folks get involved in this more and more, and this is something that we'll present when we have public meetings this year, is the interactive portion where you can click on this link and report an incident. So if you have standing water in your front yard or at your place of business, have a concern, you can go on here, report that, and it helps us collect the data and make decisions and recommendations moving forward.
Yeah, that would have been real helpful about three weeks ago. Thank you very much. And that's, unless there's anything further from the other members of that committee.
There. Go ahead.
On the homepage.
Amanda, Amanda, would you come forward so you can state that, please?
I don't have a web page. But from the homepage, if you go down to, scroll down, there's news and highlights. But from the homepage, if you go down to scroll down, there's news and highlights. And we've also added a button for capital improvements. So that'll give immediate access to that same information.
Thank you, Amanda. We appreciate it.
I don't think there's anything further at this time. So that's the conclusion of the business development report. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And also I would encourage our public to go to our citeflorence.com. All the information that you heard will be on that site, even to the things with our stormwater, the history of that and where we're at. You can always find that also on our minutes. So anything you heard today, you can go to our site and pull it and pull it from our minutes and you'll see the costs associated with this project and the things we're trying to do. But next we'll have our report from our community development committee chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Cheques McCall and Lashandra Neesmith are members of this board, of this committee, I'm sorry, and don't have really much to report today. However, I do have a question. We have been questioned with something that I wanted to ask Randy, so I'll ask it and you can respond if you can. There is some concern for elderly people or even people who don't do social media. How can we make sure that the information that's needed will get to them in times of an emergency?
Sure, this came up during the water issue a few weeks ago. As, I don't know if I can stand here today and answer that question fully. What I can tell you is as we work through our after-action review and we have this critique or follow-up, that will be identified as one of the issues. And we will try to develop a methodology to reach out to those people that we are missing, if you will. So I don't have a way to say this is what we're going to do. It's something that's got to be researched and studied.
Councilwoman, I do want to add to that. Some of the things that has been done, past issues that I will tell our citizens to, that when we do the news media, so that's going to be one source. So when we look at that, one of the things that might occur with that, so if we have our press release and if you have something that's happening early that we did social media, but in conjunction to that, a press release can go out at that time. That way the TV media, also the press and the radio media will have that. And so while we're looking at the briefing, we can look at making sure that a press release goes out sooner in the process and then in the process, looking at when would be the good time to put that out. So when we do social media alerts, do a press release as well. And that's going to hit that, but then we can also look at other things. And thank you, Randy, and thank you for the debriefing that's going to occur to address this. Councilwoman?
And so we thank you for that, just really to let everyone know that they, even, you know, all of our people are being considered. We are not just saying one group of people, just to let you know that council and staff, the mayor, all are on board with trying to make sure all of our citizens are reached. That's all, unless anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. At this time, we have a report from the marketing and public relationship committee chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I guess this has really been the hot topic because this came up in our marketing and public relations committee meeting. And in that meeting, we have Councilman Smith. We had this meeting actually December the 21st. And Councilman Smith, Ms. Amanda, and Hannah Davis was in attendance. And our biggest question with the city, of course, is Jabele, I'm sorry, Ms. Jabele. I miss you, Jabele. I'm sorry. So all of us in this meeting, and one of the questions I asked was the, what are the needs for the City of Florence? And the question really was giving out, the answer really was giving out public information. So that is a hot topic. My referral was an app, a City of Florence app. I brought this up and we had some discussion and of course, it's a matter of budgeting, you know, getting this app because I heard it costs some money. But I know being proactive in letting our customers, our visitors and our residents know what's going on inside our city where we can or they can respond or react in an early amount of time is key. We always want to engage our citizens in the decision-making process. My whole motive behind this was possibly water bowl advisories. This is something we can send out to our residents in an early manner, let them know they need to boil water. Well, this happened on Christmas where if we had this in place, we could send out mastics to let them know, hey, temperatures are getting below freezing, let's, you know, turn the faucets on to a little drip. Well, I was out of town at the time when this happened and we were at the beach, my mom's daycare, her pipes bust, so it was 27 pipes burst in her daycare. We weren't here. We were out of town, but we had to get it fixed. And I'm thinking, had we known this in advance, we could have left some water running and it could have saved a lot of businesses, a lot of headache time, money, and all of that. So I really think in line with our core values, especially when it talks about ownership and ensuring that we make sure that we give our residents and take in personal responsibility to be engaged, innovative, accountable, and receptive in the completion of tasks and assignments. I do feel like we do need to utilize proactive means to provide timely, effective, and fiscally responsible municipal services to elevate the quality of life. That's our mission statement. So if we're going to do that, let's move towards in a tool, which is everybody has a smartphone. So leveraging that tool to engage our voters and our residents is going to be key to getting out this information. Amanda, you want to come talk about some things we kind of talked about or some research you guys done into, and it may not be an app, but at least a way to send mass communications and be a little bit more proactive with our residents.
And I'm just going to ask, Amanda, could you please limit the presentation to two to three minutes?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
My research is in the very early stages, but we are looking at some other mechanisms to possibly enhance communications with the public. Certainly the issue with water over Christmas brought that to everyone's attention. We were sharing on social media and with the press and every one of those posts on social media were also sent to television, print, and radio. So we do make an effort to get the word out, but there certainly are some gaps. We're looking at a tool and there are several different companies that offer this technology. City Bot is one that I have actually sat in on a meeting with, but there are others like Click Fix is the name of another company that offers that same technology. But it's basically, there's different platforms. There's web, able to chat through the web, there's able to chat through text, but it's an automated system that basically has questions. You build it, it either, if the bot is able to direct that person or give an answer, it does. If it's not, it directs it to different places on our social media or on our website that offers that information in a more detail. So there is a lot of opportunity out there through a platform such as that. You would also have push notifications or text alerts, which I think that's what you're talking about, your company doing over Christmas, where you're able to push that information. And it does come handy. The city did have an app probably about 10 years ago for a period of time, and the push notifications were helpful. So we are doing some research, hoping to have something soon that I can present to the committee and they can move that to.
Thank you, Ma'am.
So in conclusion, just let everybody know that this is something that we are aware of, we want to work on. And even when it comes to the website, I looked at City of Charleston, City of Columbia, City of Greenville, who has apps. And they engage their residents, they're able to take pictures of potholes, upload it for that data that you guys were talking about as well. So that actually happens and seemed like we can get it all together with a proactive app, sounds like it. So that concludes my reports in the marketing and public relations committee. And it was my first meeting, so it was fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, we're having a report on the finance audit and budget committee from that chair, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I chaired this committee along with Councilman Smith and also Councilman Braddock. We met on December 28th, a couple days after Christmas. In our meeting, we had a discussion with our external auditor. He gave us a preliminary report. It's my understanding that he will be here next month to give us the full detailed report. But based on his preliminary report, we did recommend that the council do approve the audit, but I guess after we get the full-blown, well, you all get the full-blown detailed version, we can kind of record that again. Secondly, we went over, we discussed the opioid settlement and again, how much the City of Florence is to receive. And we're in a process, like staff is in the process now of getting the application processed together for people to actually request those funds whenever we get them. And then lastly, we discussed, well, staff presented an investment policy for us to review and we will review and give a recommendation for that investment policy at our next meeting held on February 13th, 2023. And I'll conclude my report this time.
Thank you, Chair. First, at this time, that concludes the committee reports. And next item is the apartments to the East Florence Gateway Study Committee.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to establish the East Tomato Corridor ad hoc committee with the following. City Councilman George Bailey as chairman, City Councilman Chippa Smith as vice chair, State Representative Terry Alexander, County Councilman Wayne Mumford, County Councilman William Schofield, Ex officio Kermit Moore as president of the East Florence Community Association, Holly Bonier, executive director of Florence CVB Convention and Bureaus, Visitors' Bureau, Tracy Williams, member of City of Florence Parks Commission, and Mindy Taylor, chair of City of Florence Resiliency Committee and Duke Energy.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second and discussion. I do have a question now. Did not the committee base get established in November and we vote again? What was the base, voter of pun in November? What was that in November? What was the, I guess I would have to ask our city attorney. With the November meeting, when they voted, what was voted upon? It was, you had a co-chair and so forth. What was November? Because now we are pointing different, so are we redoing the committee? Is that what you want to do, council? That you're redoing the committee makeup?
As what I understood at that point, Madam Mayor, you said that we would have to re-establish that.
The members of that board? So you forced a vote on your members. So, but the members was how many? Was three at that time, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
In November, we said that we voted on it and then we would have to vote on the members again in December, in the third December. What was the makeup in December?
The makeup wasn't detailed at the vote in December. It was to establish the committee and the only two members talked about on it were the two co-chairs.
Okay, so we voted on the two co-chairs. We did vote on that?
Yeah, it's my recollection, we voted on the two co-chairs.
Who were the co-chairs at that time?
I think it was Mayor Procham and Mr. Moore, Kermit Moore.
Okay, so, so we had the two co-chairs, Procham and Moore. Those was the committee members. Was that the only thing? Yeah.
We can certainly pull up a copy of the minutes from that November meeting and make sure exactly what action taken was, but that's my recollection and I would not suggest that we rely on my minutes.
Because I would say that meeting and that particular vote, I know had a long, a long process of it. So yeah, let's pull, let's pull those minutes.
Madam Mayor.
One moment, one moment. I will recognize you in one moment because I want to get this clear because I have those here before we proceed. So if you pull those minutes, so you can clarify for us and then I'll take your question after that.
Well, no, ma'am, I didn't want a question. I just want to make a motion here. I was making a motion that we discussed this in executive session for the legal issue and legal purpose of it.
Well, there's no legal issue, legal purpose. If you want to go for one other reason, what, what do we say here, Jim?
Because we don't have the minutes up here.
Oh, we, oh, the minutes is if you pull your electronic thing, your minutes are in there. Your minutes are in your packet. That's why I was asking him to do that. But if you want to, Jim, they want to do executive session. What would the motion need to be based on for?
Can I say the motion?
No, I need to get from my attorney to clear legal base for us to do it. Whenever you go into executive session, you have to have a legal base. So Jim, what would that legal base?
If you want to seek legal advice on the status of where you are, seeking legal advice is one of the specific allowed discussions in executive session. And that was my understanding of what Councilman Smith was asking.
So you can motion to do that. So legal advice.
Right, that's what I said. I just want to make a motion, discuss this in executive session for legal advice. A second.
And we have a motion and a second already on the floor. Is Councilmember Braddock willing to withdraw his motion?
I don't believe it's withdrawn.
You wouldn't need to withdraw the motion on the floor. This is a motion to seek legal advice before voting on the motion this evening on the floor.
All right. And so by doing that legal advice, what we need to do is have the minutes from the November members meetings pulled.
We're having a call.
And if you would, when you get on, y'all, please print out that section so each one of the council members will have access to it.
Print it, copy it, pass it to them.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second that the item 10, apartments to the East Florence Gateway Study Committee, be received in executive session for the purpose of legal advice, correct? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So this item will go into executive session for legal advice. Next, we have mere appointment to the flex committee. At this time, I will be appointing Councilwoman Lashonda Neesmith Jackson to the flex committee. Next, we have our executive session items. And the first one would be for negotiation incidents to propose contractual matter based upon 30-4-782. Item B, to receive an update on legal matters 30-4-782. And then personnel matter 30-4-781. And then we'll have the appointment to the East Florence Gateway Committee Study to receive legal advice, and that will also come under item 30-4-782. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? We have a second. We have a motion and a second and discussion here and now. We can go to that and we can take a five to 10 minute bathroom break for those who need it.
Keep going.
Back from executive session. I'd be Scotty, they're ready for us.
Yeah.
All right. We are back from executive session, at which time no actions and no vote were taken. So we will proceed back to our agenda with our agenda items. The first agenda item was an item for negotiating an incident to propose a contractual matter, which was resolution number 2023-30. It was a resolution and conditional grant and development agreement to provide incentive for the development of new housing in North Florence as a part of the ongoing neighborhood redevelopment project.
So.
So we have a motion and a second and discussion here and now. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Next, we did have receive an update on a legal matter, which no action or vote were taken. And we also received information for a personnel matter. And at this time, in relation to that personnel matter, I would like to reappoint our judicial committee consisting of the chair will be Councilman Chakris McCall. And previously we had, and I will ask a follow-up if they were considered to serve. Councilman Braddock, would you serve on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and last but not least, I would ask that we have a representative, Councilwoman Neesmith Jackson, would you serve on that judicial committee?
Yes.
Okay, having established those three, serve on that committee, at this time, when they are actually together, they will be looking at the requests for information for the position of a city attorney, either for being a city staffer or either being a contractual servant. So that would be the item that the judicial committee will be working on. We were asked that the city staff go ahead and open up that to public solicitation of her request for information effective immediately. And are there any discussions or any questions? Here, none, I entertain them, well, we got one more item, item number 10, which was the Apartments to the East Florence Gateway Study Committee. At this time, we'll go back to, we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Braddock. Councilman Braddock, would you please read that motion again to refresh everyone?
Motion to establish East Towneetta Corridor Ad hoc Committee with the following: City Councilman George Jabeley as chairman, City Councilman Chipa Smith, vice chair, State Representative Terry Alexander, County Councilman Wayman Melford, County Councilman William Schofield, Ex officio Kermit Moore as president of the East Florence Community Association, Holly Beaumere as executive director of Florence CVB, Josiah Williams, member of City of Florence Parks Commission, and Mindy Taylor, Chair of City of Florence Resiliency Committee and Duke Energy.
And we had a second on that, correct?
Second.
Okay, now, we have any discussions or any questions? Here or none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Interposed like sign. Let it show that the East Florence Corridor Gateway Study has been established as an ad hoc committee that we report to council, and if there's another discussion, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move back.
And second, suspend adjournment.